It is 7:30, so that means that I must call to order the Village of Terrace Park Council Meeting of March 14, 2023 to order for you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lyons, please hold the rule.
Gasky?
Here.
Ingebretson?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lemay?
Here.
Lindell?
Here.
Sharp?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Lehman is a bit under the weather, so we gave her a pass tonight, knowing that we have five able bodies to move what we need to get done, get well soon. Approval of the meeting minutes from Valentine's Day. You want to have a chance to review? Any suggestions, corrections, or deletions? Or motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Are there any residents that would like to address council? Please come to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what it is you want us to hear. Seeing none, Mrs. Ingebretson, do you think we can go out of order here?
Sounds good to me.
Let's do it.
Okay. I would like to introduce in advance to the third reading, Resolution 3-3, 2023, Consent of Council to the Appointment by the Mayor of Mehdi John Kolegi to the Volunteer Emergency Medical Services Department of the Village of Terrace Park.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
I move to adopt the resolution as an emergency.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
Fantastic. So, we're in real quick, and then we'll get you on your way. Thank you for your time and your commitment. If you please raise your right hand and be after me.
Yes, sir.
Aye Mehdi John Kolegi?
Aye Mehdi John Kolegi.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Will discharge the duties?
Will discharge the duties.
Of emergency medical technician?
Of an emergency medical technician.
For the Village of Terrace Park, Ohio.
For the Village of Terrace Park, Ohio.
Thank you so much for your commitment. We can all continue to sleep well, knowing that we always need...
You have one more volunteer on hand.
We always need more. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity. Appreciate all the support. Thank you very much.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay. We have an unbelievably exciting program for you this evening. So, again, feel not compelled to stay. If you want to go, that's why we move it up. And if you want to stay, by all means. You'll give enough time to us. We appreciate it.
Of course. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Reports of village officials, report of the mayor, that's me. Where do I start? Weather's getting good, kids are out playing, slow down, stop a little longer, all those typical things that I like to say. I attended today as mayor. I am a member of the Hamilton County District Advisory Council, which is basically a subset of the Board of Health. We have their annual meeting. I know Jeff filled in for me last year. Not much happened, other than our amount that we pay to the Board of Health went up by a couple of hundred dollars. It was like 5%. So, I think we only paid like nominal. But anyway, so that was, I did that today. That was exciting. I got a chance to meet with other leaders in the community, who are far better leaders than the ones sitting here. I had a chance to meet with the Director of the Sensate Water Works. We're talking about water lines, we're talking about what do we do, we're talking about Indian Hill, a lot of that stuff in motion, and I just wanted to make sure that we could look at the residents to kind of make sure that we've scratched the surface on all options, kind of reminiscent of going to Milford and asking about sewer in addition to going to the MSD for sewer. I met with her, not with a specific ask in mind. First of all, she's an unbelievably impressive interim director. She was very helpful. I gave her some information. She's going to look at it. I told her we did not have an immediate timeframe, but her thoughts were, initial thoughts were good. She, I have to circle back with her, you know, the ask was, this is what we're looking at. We want to get out of the water line business. We have some water lines that we need to tend to, all of those things, and hopefully I'll have a chance to get back together with her, get her thoughts, and kind of get some guidance. This isn't to say that the guidance and the thoughts that from Indian Hill that we're getting aren't equally great. They are. I just am, I'm not in the water line business. I guess technically we are, but I don't really understand that field, so I want to try to get as much information as possible. So, I will circle back with her, and if anything of note comes to light, I'll certainly share it as soon as I have information. Any thoughts on that meeting?
Good.
I did bring up the fact that, you know, we have water lines that were in the 50s and the 60s, and she said, those really aren't that old. They're not, they're not like the lead lines that we're dealing with in other places. You know, she said, so don't be scared of that. She said, I'd like to know what they're made of, because that would be interesting, because that would tell us. She did think it was a bit interesting that we had fours and sixes and eight-inch lines that sort of crisscrossed, and on her first thought, she did look at those alleys and said, well, why can't you just move those fire hydrants out? And I said, ah, good idea. And she said, well, if I were looking at you and you're looking to make the biggest bang for your buck, you know, talk to your fire department, and talk to Indian Hill Water Works, and find out where, if at all, where, if at all, do we have any concerns as it relates to fire and fire suppression? Number one place to start without a doubt. So, you know, once we start moving down that line of analyzing water lines and figuring out ways to fund it, and et cetera, et cetera, that's probably not a bad place to start to say, where would, where would the fire department like us to focus our efforts out of a pure safety consideration versus these are older, and we should probably start thinking about moving them? But she said, fear not, a 50, 1950s pipe. She said, they work great. So, that was that meeting. Got a little bit of concerning news last week, and I want to thank Health Commissioner Greg Kesterman, who has been a true partner in a lot of things. The biannual budget bill that the General Assembly passes, that, you know, is about that big, that is supposed to be geared solely towards budget and appropriations, had a proposed amendment in there that would undo the work we did with the Hamilton County General Health District over our septic systems as it relates to drywells. They put in their language that basically called drywells a per se nuisance. Done. Whereas if you recall, the language in the statute was, if they're a nuisance and they can't be fixed, then they gotta go. Right? And that's what we pushed back. I don't think the Board of Health conceded that we were right, but let's just say we got some relief, not just in the length of time by which these drywells and other, we'll call it, non-conforming systems need to be replaced. Think we got 20, 43 years?
Till 2045.
2045. So Greg brought it to my attention, and my first question to Greg was, who initiated this? Did you guys, did you guys try to backtrack on this? He said, absolutely not. In fact, we are against it. We, the Commissioners Association is against it. Greg and I immediately, I got a meeting with, a Zoom meeting with Representative Rachel Baker, as well as Representative Isaacson, who has like the city of Cincinnati. We talked about it. Greg was on there, the Commissioner was on there, and others. We told him that we have grave, grave, grave concerns, and of the thousand or so drywells that are in Hamilton County, we are the proud location of 632 of them. So, we are disproportionately crushed by any type of immediate language that would call for the immediate replacement of these things, and it would undo what we thought was a heck of a lot of hard work and a fair result. Fast forward, the Health Commissioner contacted Representative Bill Seitz, who is fairly high up on the whole ranking, majority leader type stuff, and he has proposed, or will propose, language that would have what is written by, in the book, but it would have reference to, or unless governed by a plan. Because if you remember, our settlement agreement, if you will, ultimately was adopted by Hamilton County Board of Health that became countywide applicable.
Yeah.
And I think the Village Council should be very proud of the fact that we are helped effectuate change for the whole county, not just our residents. So, that was comforting. I sent it to Bill Hayes, who asked for a smaller revision to it, and the language that he recommended, and for all those people that love to watch this late at night that think that I'm playing on my phone and not paying attention, I'm actually looking, yes, they're out there. So, the language is, is not, is not a nuisance. If it is subject to a current remediation plan, which is what we believe that we have, because that was adopted by the county, and Bill asked that we insert and slash or schedule. That's the 2045. So, that was sent to Representative Seitz's office for consideration with that additional language. I feel good, because I think they're, I imparted on them how, how big of a deal that would be, and how that would be unfair to all the work that we did to the county. So, hats off to the Commissioner, who alerted us to this, who came out in strong opposition to the proposed language, calling drywells a per se nuisance. So, keep your fingers crossed. I'm meeting with Rachel Baker next week, just on her personal leverage, just to get to know her, because there's some things that maybe that we want to do, that maybe the state legislature can help us do, and I will keep monitoring that. So, as of now, we're not out of the woods, but we are, we have the right ear. We've got some language that was drafted by Representative Seitz's office, I think, and I think they're receptive to probably the plan, because that's the kicker, is the 2045. So, it took up an awful lot of time the last couple, couple of weeks. So, again, thanks.
Well done.
Thanks to Commissioner Kesterman. Frankly, I would not have known that it was in there. And that's the problem with these, the budget bills. What do drywells have to do with the budget? Absolutely nothing. It's ridiculous.
That's crazy.
Representative Seitz, if you're out there watching, and all you other leaders, as well as Representative Isaacson, Representative Baker, thank you for your attention. It's an important thing for us, about as important a thing as we faced in my short, whatever years doing this job. So, stay tuned. I will continue to monitor if there are any significant updates. I will update all of you.
Do you have any idea, timing wise? Is this like a...
It's usually a June type of passage, I think. Yes, because their budgets, I think, are June 1. I don't know if they're on a calendar year. But anyway, I'll be following it.
Do we have any information about sort of why this language or amendment was proposed, and where it's coming from?
Well, that was a really good question, because Bill Hayes said, where did this come from? I mean, I'm the pessimist, and again, as long as you know that your government is going to disappoint you, you'll never be disappointed. I know it's ironic that I'm saying that, but, but I thought that maybe Hamilton County was just generally unhappy with the deal that they struck. I couldn't, I was, couldn't be more wrong, and I apologize for even saying that. So, I wanted to know where the heck it came from. It actually came from, it was in the Governor's Blue Book. What does that mean? Well, that means that, that's where they put stuff where people have requests, and I think perhaps it came from the Department of Health.
Ohio.
Yeah. Because there are other places that are struggling with the drywells, and part of the pitch was trying to educate them, and Greg Kesterman did a great job of saying, look, this isn't like super dense clay soil where these things are a little problematic, and he says, we have no data whatsoever that shows that the, that there's any contamination of groundwater, none whatsoever. He does admit that, hey, these drywells are not the ideal way to do it. They just aren't. He's like, from a health perspective, they're not ideal. The new ones are the more ideal way to do it. But he says, we can't say that they're problematic, certainly in Terrace Park. So, I think that's where it came from, was the State Department. Bill Hayes was very shocked, because when they brought our original issue to them on, you know, the phasing out, they were kind of eh, like indifferent. So, it was kind of shocking. Again, to all those people out there, or Board of Health, or State Board of Health, if you guys were not the ones that initiated it, I'm sorry, that's just the best information I have. And if it wasn't you, please stand, come forward, whoever the hell you were, because I don't much care for that language. Thoughts?
Yeah, that's great. Well done.
All right, well, I'm exhausted.
Good catch.
Thank you. Chief Disc Officer Katie Lyons.
No report.
Chief Lawyer Jeff Forbes.
Thank you. No report.
Mrs. Lyons is the Clerk of Council.
No report.
Chief Magrath always has good news.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the good news is the class is proceeding, the new EMS recruits. They are due to finish up in mid-May, as I understand it. So, that's all going well. Putting on my, my fire and EMS hat.
Yes, sir.
We had a great joint training last night over here with the Fire Department, EMS Department, great turnout. We have a lot of fairly new people that are not, EMS is really not used to dealing with down firefighters and vice versa. The firefighters got to work with a bunch of our equipment, including the set of steps right over there, which is, on a stair chair can be a little, a little intimidating, but everybody did, did really well. And also, you mentioned Rachel Baker. I'm really happy with her stepping in on the House Bill 509.
She jumped right on it, John. I mean, right on it. Immediately responded. Great.
Yeah, it was fantastic. I think that's all I have.
You know, on that note, I did also, at the same time, I sent an email to Representative Baker. I did send the same email to State Senator Steve Wilson, who I still have not had a response from. So, thank you, Representative Baker, very much, and I certainly will lodge a call into Senator Wilson to let him know that we are here, we are constituents, and, you know, that's not what I was hoping for. So...
I've heard back from a couple of people that talked to her and tried to talk to Mr. Wilson with the same result, basically, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'd like to say that he's got a much bigger district, and has got more things on his plate, but you know what? Damn it, we're special, so I will be calling his office and having a conversation. Thank you for covering fire as well. Chief and Administrator Jerry Hay.
Thanks, Your Honor. So, real briefly, I guess, I met with our sidewalk contractor today and marked off the sidewalk blocks that need to be replaced. Most of the areas around the church and up by the school, they are the highest volume of for pedestrians, and the sidewalks down by church have, were put in in the 30s. Some of the places, they're an inch thick, and, and that's all. And so, the trees are moving them, so I have our contractor sending a bid over, and hopefully I'll be, I'll be able to come to council, and Mr. Lindell will be able to show council the resolution to get the work done, so it's certainly a must. I also spoke to Strasser Construction today, requesting a price on resurfacing some of our streets with the black mat, black top ceiling product. It's been a while since we've had that, but we've been doing some base repairs, and we may have to do that again this year, because everything is so expensive, we're getting a lot less these days. So, I should have a resolution next month for that also. As a matter of fact, that should be at the 130th council meeting. Is that correct?
130 years.
There you go.
Just hope we get there.
Right. I do want to say, and certainly a shout out to the EMS. Last Tuesday, we had two gentlemen OD on 50. Luckily, thank the Lord, that they pulled over, so innocent people didn't get hurt, but one of them died there in the street. So, these guys were on the spot and did a great job, and we had help, great help from the paramedics in the area, but like I said, I was proud to be next to them. That's the end of my report.
That's great. Thank you. Great. Any members of council outside their committee? Planning and zoning, Mr. Gasky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a public hearing that was held by the Planning Commission this evening, right before this meeting, to continue the discussion and kind of socializing a couple of different items. One, this zoning coding language around structures, accessory structures, and how high they are against the principal building on the property. So, there's continued discussion around that in the public hearing. The next one was about the use of signs. This is something, again, it's, we talked about last month, that's, we'll continue to have a public discussion on that. I think the goal is to have something a little bit more formal by May. I think that's the goal, but until then, we'll keep talking about this.
Yeah, I think, as we were mapping this out, we're going to send out some, the proposed recommended language to council as it relates to height cleanup and signs, so you'll, you'll have that well in advance of the 130th council meeting.
Which you'll have a sign for, of course, for the 130th, right?
Yeah.
So, you need to be...
Well, depends. We got to get underneath, under the old regulations. So, we will do a first reading and a public hearing, just a first reading in April?
Yes, we will be able to have a first reading of the ordinance to adopt the amendments at the April meeting, followed by the public hearing at the May council meeting, and then...
Possible passage or possible second reading?
It's up to council, right. Exactly.
So, when you get that information, you'll, you'll receive it probably from Jerry, as it relates to this proposed language. Think about it, questions? We can talk about it, and, but the, the, I'll call it, the height and the cleanup stuff, fairly straightforward. The signage, you know, maybe spend a little bit longer kind of reading that stuff, and I want to thank Mr. Forbes over here. He has the difficult task of trying to help guide us with revised regulations for signage in an ever dynamic First Amendment world, because you can have a, what you think is a constitutionally sound set of sign regulations, only to be told by a majority vote of a Supreme Court, one way or the other, that that's no longer any good. So, it's a moving target. We think we're in a good spot. We try to keep it very simple, so be on the lookout for the red line of the proposed changes as it relates to what currently exists. Thoughts, questions on that?
Continue to work.
Let's go. Thank you, David Moyer, as well.
Yes, thank you.
For his hard work. Mr. Lemay, Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two resolutions. 3-1 is, we're urging the Governor of Ohio and members of the Assembly to support reintroduction of what's called the Local Government Fund. It was reduced by 50% in 2011, following the financial crisis, in an attempt to shore up the state of Ohio's budget or coffers. As background, this fund was established back in the 30s, and it takes monies, a portion of monies from fines, permits, tax revenue, sales. It's accumulated in Columbus, and then it is dispersed out to communities, called the Local Government Fund. And again, it was cut in 2011. It's one of the reasons why we needed to put the last levy on the books in 2013, was to replace the lost revenue here. And it's about $37,000 a year for us, over 10 years, it's $370,000, or for Jerry, a lot of sidewalks, right? So, this resolution is simply asking the Governor, along with other townships and villages and cities, to reintroduce this. We're advocating for it. Okay? Any questions? Good. Okay, I'd like to introduce in advance of the third reading, Resolution 3-1, 2023, strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the Local Government Fund to pre-recession levels and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
I move to adopt the resolution as an emergency.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
This is, this is great. I would ask that a copy of this be emailed to Representative Baker, to Senator Wilson, and let's send it to the Governor. I don't know what his email is, but let's send it to him. What the heck?
And the village views.
You know, if anybody thinks that you were asking for money that we're going to misspend, please come, sit down with Jeff, and Katie, and Jerry, and try to find out where we did, because you know what? We're all ears. Bet you won't find it, because we're judicious in our spending.
Great. Thank you for just reporting on that one. And this next one is, we review salaries annually. This is Jerry's work, and we set a cap at 3% across the, all of our employees, so fire, so all of safety, administrative work, and our buildings and ground. Jerry has the discretion to allocate that 3% across the employees based on performance and tenure and those kind of things. So, some employees would get conceivably larger than 3%, and some may get less, based upon Jerry's assessment of their performance and contribution. We think, and I talked to Jerry briefly, this is sufficient to reward, attract, and retain employees. We noted that, you know, our primary benchmark village is Merrimott. They have recently adopted this as well. Rob Bartlett and I, and some other, and Jerry do some benchmarking now and again, compare notes. They adopted this approach recently. Jerry and I talked briefly, given inflation has been higher than 3%, certainly over the last year, is this still good enough? Jerry believes so. Again, we can reward people greater than 3%. Plus, inflation has been lower than 3% for the preceding two and a half, almost three years. So, we think for now, we'll continue to assess it. This is adequate, again, retain, recognize, and reward our employees. Any questions? No? Jerry, anything to add?
No, sir. Perfect.
Sure. All right. I'd like to introduce in advance the third reading, Resolution 3-2-23, 2023, fixing the salaries and ratings of Village employees effective March 16, 2023.
Second. Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
I move to adopt the resolution as an emergency.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
I move to adopt the resolution as an emergency.
Second.
Gasky?
Aye.
Ingebretson?
Aye.
Lemay?
Aye.
Lindell?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
And I will, sorry, I'm going to take a step back. I will, this resolution on the Local Government Fund, I will send it to all three of those.
Oh, okay.
Great. Whoever. Heck, I say we all send it multiple times. Unless you know the Governor, like you're in with the Governor, right? You can send it. If I send it to him, he probably won't take it seriously. It's up to you. Be like, you're really a mayor? You got to be kidding me. If we get that money, maybe we can buy you chairs. Do you want to do it? No, sir.
Just to discuss what you hit on earlier, kind of the water system and also the Elm Connector. So it's going to be a long process, but it has started. And if anybody has any questions, just let us know, so.
You know, stay tuned for things to come. There'll be some stuff potentially brought to council to consider and chew on, but it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of money, so.
It's kind of two major projects, but kind of split into two different buckets. But they're still all under Public Works. And then affect the water system and the upkeep of it and safety and all those things, so.
Just for those, those people watching thinking that it doesn't take a lot of time doing these jobs, you know, I can tell you that Jeff and Pax, Jerry, and dealing with this water line stuff is, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and, you know, we're fortunate that we have people that are willing and have the time to spend. But people ask, how long does it take to do that job? It's hard to quantify, but it seems like it's been a fairly heavy, heavy lift amongst council people the last six months, and I'm not blind to that fact. So thanks for all, everyone's time, and, you know, we can always use more help doing it, so. Stay tuned.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Public Safety, Lauren, do you have anything in addition?
No further report. Thank you.
All right, looks like we're going to close this out. Any continued business or new business? About a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll favor say, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you in March. So March is what, the 130th? April. April.
April is the 130th, possibly?
30th year.
If I'm to believe Steve Early, which I'd be hard pressed not to take him at his word, I believe that, that April, the, whenever we moved it to. I was reading the Village Views when I sent that text. I said, that's 130th to the day, year. 130 years ago, that coming up was the first council meeting.
Is that right?
I don't know. Yeah, it's kind of cool. I think you were at the first one. I think you were at the first, Steve Early.
Do I have it?
Yeah.
I do.